Okay, so welcome everyone. How wonderful it is to see so many of you here. This is really exciting for us and I really appreciate you being here to hear all the things that we've been doing for the last year and that we have planned for the future this year and the coming years. My name is Elsie Thurman. I'm the mayor of Horshoe Bay. It's a great privilege for me to have that job. And where'd he go? Standing with me here is Jeff Koska, our wonderful city manager who is responsible for most of the good things that you see going on. Jeff and I, Jeff and I have put together a PowerPoint presentation where we can share with you the things that we've done, the things that are coming up, some of the challenges, some of the rewards that we've had. The staff, we have, all of our directors are here and they're scattered at these tables about the room and we want you to have an opportunity after this meeting to go up and meet them, visit with them, ask your questions. This is where the work is done in Horshoe Bay and they're the ones that can answer your questions. So please feel free to stay here for a while, visit with them. They've all got some cool gifts for you to take home and I hope you'll do that. Jeff and I are gonna speak for about an hour, we hope, we think we can do that. And then we're gonna, we're gonna turn this over to Ruben Fetscher, who is chairman of the Land Use Advisory Planning Committee, Land Use and Development Advisory Planning Committee, which they will be telling you what they're doing. This is a very important committee that is part of our comprehensive plan and our long-range plans on land use, both within the city and in the ETJ. We do want to answer your questions, but we are gonna, Jeff and I will be over here at this table after the meeting. We will answer any questions you have, but we want to give you time to go around and ask questions of the staff, so we will not be taking questions at this podium, but please we will be happy to answer your questions. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Jeff Koska.
Thank you very much. Welcome everybody. Glad to see a full room. This is incredible. It keeps growing every year and we're very blessed to have y'all here. Glad that y'all are interested in what we're doing, because we're always interested in what y'all think. So first, I think we're gonna start off and talk about kind of some of the status of where we are now and some of the things that we've been doing over the last year and kind of where we're going in the future and just sum up that some different information. So this is a pretty long time, because we do have the Land Use Committee that's gonna have a little bit of presentation, about 10 minutes in the middle of ours. So I'm gonna talk somewhat fast and so if there's something that I say that catches your attention that we need to talk about, like the mayor said, we'll be sitting over here so y'all can come up and ask us later. And feel free, anytime, to call my office if you have any concerns or any issues out there. I'm here to work for you, but I work for my crew. I appreciate all of the department heads and all the people that work for me. They're the ones that make this community great. I'm just a go-between, I'm a figurehead, but it's between the council and all of these employees and all the work that they do that make this place a great place to live. So just wanted to get that out there right off the bat for you guys. So anyway, so I'm gonna talk about some of the things that are going on right now. Well, I wanna tell you and start off right off the bat to say how we financially, we're great. We just did an audit, which we do every year, and we have an unqualified audit answer to that. Basically, it's the highest rating that we can get on an audit and we do that year after year after year. And that's, that's always our goal. We're responsible for your money and we make sure that it's spent on the things that are good for our community. The second thing is our AA+ rating, credit rating. This is a standard supporter and every time we go out for bonds for big projects, this allows us to get some of the lowest interest rate out there. Sometimes we're even lower getting that way than we are through state programs and other ways of low-interest loans. So we plan on continuing to keep it that way. It's important for us that we keep that cost down so we can keep the low and steady tax rate. That is another thing that we've been able to keep our tax rate the same or drop it down a little bit over the last couple of years. All doing this while we're facing unprecedented times about with inflation and growth that puts a stress on our operations. So a lot I put on the department heads who really take their budget seriously and ensure that we come out at the end of the year kind of where we started and what we planned for. Other thing is utility competitive, our competitive utility rates. We do every year, when we look at our utility rates, we kind of benchmark ourselves against other communities around us and those of our size. And we, like the water, we looked at it, we're about 20% of where the average is below the, what the average is. So we're competitive on our utility rates and the water rates, our sewer rates, a little bit more and more in the middle of the pack of that, but that's because we have a low-pressure sewer system and we maintain those grinds. We have close to 4,000 grinder pumps out there that are mechanical pieces of equipment that we have to maintain and most normal sewers are gravity. So we do have a component that's more expensive, but we still stay within the range of where we should be on what we charge for our utility service. So one of the other things that we do to ensure that we keep that cost down is we really do a lot of master planning. And you'll hear a little bit more about that. This is both physical and financial that we work on all the, all year long and that's part of the council's, when we start our budget meeting, we start in January and we just completed it yesterday. So it takes a long time to go through the process. There's a lot of, a lot of discussion. I think the first one that we have in January is usually almost an eight-hour meeting, straight solid conversation between the department heads and the council. So we take it very serious on the financial, not only the financial side of things, but also the way that we provide our service. So one of the things that a couple of years ago we were having some issues with was our dependability of a water system in West as far as the pressure goes. Capacity-wise, we have plenty of capacity, but during the irrigation times, we were having some problems out there. I'll give it to the utilities department, they really focused on some solutions on that. And within, you know, three months after we sort of had these problems and them jumping on it, we were able to find ways to mitigate that and we haven't had any real issues since then, although we continue to try to increase our dependability with our, our system. One of the things that we're doing this year, it should start in November, is we're building a cross-line, a cross-town transmission project. We have more capacity in the central plant than we do in the west plant and so we're making sure that we can get enough of that additional capacity in the central plant over to the west side of the city so we can ensure we have plenty of capacity over there where a lot of our growth is going. The second thing we're doing is on the west water plant, we're doubling the capacity that. We started the engineer this year on it. We'll get through the engineer probably in the spring of next year and then there's a system, a time that we have to go through TCQ to have them review the plant and do that part of approving the plan and then we'll go into construction probably in '27 is what I expect that we're probably going to that, expanding that plant. In the meantime, the expanded cross-town transmission is gonna give us some more capacity than that source. One other thing we're doing is we're looking at for alternate sources of water and that's everything from looking at conservation on how some of the new houses are being built to see if there's something within the house building that we can try to, to utilize to reduce the, the use of water, to also seeking groundwater sources that may be available as relatively close. And then also reuse the water. Every bit of our wastewater that we produce in our city goes on the golf courses, except sometimes in the way we may have about 2% that goes on a ranch, just so we can ensure our pond levels don't go above our required levels. So we're always looking for improvements in our water system and I applaud Rick Williams, who was our, was our utility director, fixing about to be my city, assistant city manager, and applaud him for a lot of the work that he's done to do that. So another big issue that we recognize, I've been here since 1998 and so, you know, y'all know we live in Flash flood alley and that, that means that we get high hard rains and that impacts drainage that we have around everybody's house. We started a couple of years ago looking at just the development of when houses are being built, what do we look at that can help offset flows that go off of that property onto your neighbor's property and it just affect negatively the, the whole drainage area. And so we created a drainage criteria manual last year. We continue to tweak that with the builders and we work with the builders to kind of work and show them while we're doing that. And then last year, we started a drainage study across the city on every one of our basins within the city. That drainage will be planned, or that study will be completed in December of '24 and immediately after that, we're gonna start working on a drainage plan within the city to help identify capital improvement plans and then look at areas where we may need to elevate house labs to make sure that they are out of the flood zone. So many more things, we're gonna take that up and start in January. It takes about a year to kind of get all this done, get the ordinances completed and figure out how we're going to and where we're gonna set priorities. So something that's ongoing. Another thing that we've been doing for probably about five years, really hard and heavy, is our city asset management. This started in the utilities, started in the distribution and the wastewater lines is pushed to the water plants now. We're now working on adding our roads and infrastructure, other infrastructure into the, the asset management system and we're using this to master plan as well. A lot of this has to include data collection and analysis, so we can look at, right now we're proper's a little, we're 50 years old. That means the water lines, the roads, signage, a lot of things. And so we're really looking at, it's time to really talk about, you know, these assets and what we need to do to keep them up. And so this, this asset management system really helps us identify if we have to replace something or if we can rehabilitate it and what that cost is and so we can kind of plan for our future. And we're looking at things not in a five-year, but sometimes 10, 15 years, because we know utilities that far out that we can kind of start to put them on the radar that they need to be funded. So the other thing that we've been working on and I believe we have a map, I think it's at Public Works Department, I think they have a map of where our fiber is run across the city. It also has some information on the, where the internet towers that we constructed last year are. There are two companies that are on that, those towers currently. Those are two local companies, well, they're relatively local, VGI and the other one is Zicon. Both have offices in Marble Falls. The city doesn't really do internet, so you need to contact them directly. When I said that we were talking about fiber across the city, we started a project last year with Rio, Rio Broadband to expand internet fiber across the city. We did all of this, the towers and where we're going across the city and running a trunk line to all the city locations. Now that trunk line will be spread throughout the city with fiber in different areas. And so we used American Recovery Plan money, so none of this cost you as a taxpayer any dollars, but it is coming along fine now. So if you have internet issues, Zicon and VGI are up and running now as they lay the fiber path. If you're on the path itself and you can see it on that map, they'll have kind of the basic location where it's going. If it's gonna be crossing in front of your house, I would contact them immediately. I think we may have a Rio, yeah, Rio representative, shoot, I'm looking for that guy right there. He, he has came in to talk if, if you need to talk about fiber, he's your guy to talk to about that. So, so we're using your resources to try to improve our internet and we've come a long way in two years. But I will say, we've been working on this for about eight years. So we're spraying Kozia areas in the back. He's our council member, has been steady after it to, to have this project happen. So I really applaud his efforts, because he's really pushed this hard and his knowledge has really put us a long ways forward to that. The other thing we're looking at is we're expanding our street program to the inclusion arterial streets. Plus, we have a policy where if, if there's 15 houses per mile, we'll redo a street, so it's to a higher standard. And so when we started looking at Tim Ferran, who is the Public Works Director, and I started looking to this and saying, we really, we really need to expand this. And so we're starting to look at that, we talked to the council this year and this year was the first year we're gonna start looking at some of those areas that are the carrier streets that may not meet that, that growth limit, but they certainly are being traveled a lot and so we're trying to expand our capacity to improve some of those roads to be revised to better, higher standards. Citizen input and engagement. We have five active committees right now and these, these folks are volunteers. The one that, the newest one, well, there's two, two that we started probably in the last six months. One is a Land Use and Development Advisory Committee and they're gonna talk to y'all in a couple of minutes and talk about the survey that we have out there, because we're really working on the land use as part of a bigger plan, which is gonna be our city comprehensive plan. It'll be the first time we have a city comprehensive plan and I'll talk a little bit about that later. But all of these committees are from volunteers out of our, our community. These folks have extraordinary experience and they're, they're coming and spending their time with us and helping us make our city better. And that is, that's an incredible thing to have this many good, talented people come in and work with us. And that, that includes, like I said, the land use plan, the transportation plan, which has been going for about a year, almost two years now. And they're gonna present a, a first transportation plan, which really has a lot of recommendations, including what we've been talking about with Works Now. I'll have some more information on that in a minute too. And, and our intersections that we have within the city that we know that we have some problems with, that we're trying to identify and make plans for improvements. Historical committee, have to say, you know, Jim Jordan, if y'all know Jim Jordan, he's our city historian. Man's full of knowledge about not just our city, but the whole area around here. And we have a link on our, or one, a page on our website that's dedicated to that. And I applaud him being a five, five-generation Texan. It's great to share history with our community about what happened here, you know, not only when Horshoe Bay was built up to now, but also here when the Fuchs used to live here and even before that, when, when this land was first owned by, by the Indians and the Lizards. So lots of Lizards. Another thing we're working on at this point, and I think if you've been down by Sea Hall and Martin Park, you noticed that we toured the pavilion down earlier this week and we're working on, there's a pad out there we're replacing with new bathrooms that will be kind of set to where they're, they're shared with the pickleball courts and, and the park there itself. And then we're going to replace, we gotta do a little more concrete work and then we're gonna replace the pavilion with a, a little bit higher pavilion with some fans and some lights in it, try to just get some better use out of that. And it was time, if you ever went in the bathrooms, you could tell, you know, they were, they needed to be replaced. So we're right in the middle of that and I would imagine the next month we're gonna be, pretty much have that all backed up and we can run again. We did add some screening and some shade for the pickleball courts, because we were seeing that people were sweating out there quite a bit too much. So we added that to there as well. Another thing, we're developing trails, that we'll be walking trails at our new city center and the mayor will talk a bit about the city center in a minute, but you know, we, we started with three and a half acres and now we have 10 acres that are contiguous to that property. You know, now's the time to just get that property and, and hold it for our future. But even in the meantime, on the six acres that we're working with, SCRA now, which is right next to it, we're working with them to, to use part of that for parking and then part of that for, for some water quality control stuff, but the rest of it, we're gonna put winding trails and we're gonna put native gardens in, in that, that area. We have a staff member, Sandra Nash, who is a landscape architect that is doing all this for Grotis. You know, that's a great employee that does stuff like that. So we have some great employees and, and so we're working on that. The other thing, we'll let the mayor talk about the city sooner.
Thank you Jeff. So, or you, do you wanna still use the, do you want to quick button? I don't know how to do that. What do I do? Oh, just, okay. Yeah, I told Jeff I wanted to talk about the building projects, because I'm very, very excited about this. We've been working on the, the city center and we're calling it City Center, not City Hall, because it's not just City Hall, it's a center for all of us. This is the rendering of what this building's gonna look like. It's over at the lot across from the construction, construction entrance to Escondido and we are going to be breaking ground this week or next. We're running, we've got a little bit of an issue with getting some approvals that we needed from the LCR, but we've just about got all that nailed down and we've got this building planned. It's gonna be lovely. It's not gonna be fancy, it's gonna, you're gonna be proud of it, it's gonna be functional. If you happen to have noticed, between the city hall and the fire station, we have a new structure, which is a temporary building. And we honestly, when we, when we added the assistant city manager position, we just didn't have another closet to put a person in and that's the truth. So we put a temporary building up there that we'll have to use until the structure's completed. And as Jeff was saying, it's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of nice things for all of us. There's gonna be a walking trail. I love the trail up at Horseshoe Creek, but it's, it's really kind of hard to walk on for some people. This is gonna be a nice flat trail that we can all stroll along. There's gonna be shade along the way, so I think you'll all be very proud of this place. We hope to have some community gatherings there, so you can join me in watching the progress of this building as it goes up. We have another project, oh, I wanna tell you about this. These are just pictures of desks, right? No, these are pictures of the desks that we're gonna be getting, similar to this. They're custom-made desks and they're made by the Texas Corrections Department. This program is available to cities and counties. We'll get these desks for about half the price that we would pay for them in any other market and it's a wonderful program where the, the people who are incarcerated learn a trade, they have a very low recidivism rate when they come out of this program. So it's a wonderful program and I'm just really proud that our city is gonna be part of that and that we're gonna have some beautiful furniture in these offices as a result of that. We're buying a lot of furniture from them. They just make amazing things, it's unbelievable. And it's about half the cost, yeah, of what it would cost us otherwise. And then the other, the other building project that we're doing is an improvement to the west fire station. So the west fire station's structure that is there now is going to remain. We were planning on remodeling it, but when we, the architects started looking at it, they realized that this building was old and in order to bring it up to code, it was just gonna take a lot more money than we were willing to spend. So we're building an annex sort of behind and to the right of it and that's what this will look like. This will house the firefighters who live there and it will house one engine and this is gonna be, we'll also have a decontamination room, which we don't have at either of our firehouses now, so this is something that we've needed. And the long-range plan on this is that at the end of that building on the left, phase two, is that we'll demolish the current structure and we'll, we'll enlarge that structure to accommodate all the, the fire trucks that are there. But this is something that also will be starting, we think it'll be in about October. We expect both buildings to be done by the end of 2025. So you'll be seeing that progress and I think it's gonna be wonderful for everybody. So thank you very much and back to Jeff. Oh, oh, I get to talk about this too. So as Jeff mentioned, the volunteers. And, but what we didn't mention is that we have a lot of volunteers that don't always get recognized and I did, I've seen some of these people, I don't know who all's here, but if you, but the telecare is a wonderful program. If you are, if you live by yourself, you can, we have a program where you just make a phone call every day and if you don't make that phone call, then somebody will call you and if you don't answer, somebody will come and check on you. It's free, it's available to everyone and if you are a telecare volunteer, would you stand up? Linda Amstess, I know, I saw you. Yeah, there she is. There's not a whole lot of them, but this is an important program. This is Citizens Emergency Response Team. This is a group of people and if you are a cert member, we're in the, would you stand up? This is a, a program where we are just re-certifying them. It's a program that the Fire Mar, the Fire Chief supervises and this is something, they're not, they're not emergency response professionals, but they're people who can help direct traffic and come in and help the first responders if we really ever need more, more feet on the ground. So this is a wonderful way for people to volunteer, to help our community in times of need. And of course, we have these ongoing committees, Planning and Zoning Commission, if you're here, stand up. These guys meet once a month. Oh come on, I know some of you are here. There's, there's one or two. They meet once a month and they handle all the requests for rezoning and they, they, they study hard, they do a lot of work. The council relies very heavily on their recommendations. The Board of Adjustments, this is also a very important committee. They don't meet often, but when they meet, it's an important meeting, because they're the ones that if you want any kind of a variance, you have to go to them. Their, their judgment is final. It does not come to the city council for appeal. If you want to appeal the opinion of the Board of Adjustments, it goes to the courts. The Transportation Committee, oh my gosh, these guys have been working like crazy for the last year and a half and they have a booth set up somewhere. Where's the Transportation Committee? Do we have a booth for them? Kelly, you don't? Okay. Well, we have some more slides that Jeff's gonna get to on the Transportation Committee. We've got some great plans, because we've got a problem with Transportation's community and we know it. We know that 2147 is a problem and we are working hard to address it. I'll talk a little bit later about my involvement in the greater regional community also on this issue. And Jeff already mentioned the Ludac Committee and the Historical Preservation Committee. I just wanna say thank you to all of these volunteers. It's a lot of time, we all moved here to volunteer, I mean, to enjoy and retire. Four of us moved here to volunteer, I don't know what's the matter with it. But anyway, this is, this is an important support for us and we really appreciate it. So thank you.
So there's some other volunteers that you need to know about. This is your city council. And like I said earlier, you know, we, we have meetings, we have more meetings now than I think we ever have, which is, I think it's approaching around 26 that we have, which is getting close to two a month. But there's a lot of meetings that we have and they, they spend a ton of their volunteer time to keep up and read our package, which sometimes would be, you know, two inches thick, to, to keep up with the business of, of this city. And, and they, they like other volunteers, they get paid like this. Yeah, but they are very much appreciated. If you see them, council members, if you hold your hands up, please, thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna switch to some emerging challenges, those things that we've been working on. Building contact, I mean, conduct and inspections. We have some great builders here, let me start that. We have some exceptionally good builders, good quality and work with us ideally to, to resolve things. But we, you know, we had a booth and we had a lot of builders that came in that were, were not really up to par with what our local builders are. So we took it as an issue to protect our citizens and to seek for approved accountability for non-compliant builders and contractors. So one of the things that we did this year is we added a building official position. And this, this is so we can get the speed of operation of inspections, the speed of problems, we can have somebody go out there. And David, is David here? Oh, he's not here, okay. So he's out working, probably a problem. But, but if you know David, he used to be, or was our water conservation officer and he has, this is his background, he's a building maintenance, or building official experience. So it was a perfect fit for us to, to put him in this position. So we continue to work with our builders. We have a new committee, it's called a BRAC committee, which is a building regulatory compliance committee. Basically, we're looking at codes and we're going through things that our city, the processes with our city that we do with building and we're working with them to make sure that we have smooth transition between the builders and the city. But also, we're looking at ways that we can make sure that the building conduct of those that we know that are, are bad apples in, in our building, of community, to get weeded out. We are here to protect you as the citizens and we thank all of those builders that are involved in this, that, to help us get there. So another thing is growth pressures. We have, you know, the growth that we had the last three years, four years, has been pretty substantial for us. And I'm, I'm just gonna go down to a chart here. But the good news is, if you look at the chart here, we're at 91. But, the good news is, if you look at the chart here, we're at 91 this year. So, we went all the way up to 223 a couple of years ago, and those are slowing down to 90, which is much more kinda in the reasonable range of being able to kinda seek growth. I've been here, you know, 26 years, and we go through cycles like this every once in a while. So we'll go through them, and never have we seen in the 200 number. But it was pretty big, and it was impacting us. But like I said, I give a lot of credit to the directors, who, the budgets, you know, stayed within the range where they needed to be, and they were really looking at it for the long term, and, and we were able to keep our budgets within, in the budget. So, just to kinda tell you that, you know, that's still an issue, but it's, we have a pretty good handle on it going forwards. Others, transportation. The mayor touched on it, we have a transportation committee. As soon as we hit the ground with that committee a year and a half ago, some of the first things we looked at was the worst damn road. How is that gonna affect our community, and what do we need to do to kinda consider what we need to be doing as our community? So first, off that bat, we started talking to TechDOT, and we've been working with TechDOT every then and accounting. And, and, you know, what our options were is really, we think the road's gonna happen. There's pros and cons to that, but the road is going to happen, and we think it'll start in next year. It'll take a couple of years to build. But we know that 2147's gonna be an issue, because there's no way out of there other than the same road it is, so we're pushing on TechDOT. Next year, they're gonna be looking at a regional plan for us around our area, to try to see if we can come up with some alternatives and get them to support more of what's happening here. The other thing is that, you know, we are looking for alternate routes that take the traffic off of 2147 to the east, and take it and go to 71. We continue to work on that, and then our regional traffic, we work with all our partners around here, Marble Falls and everybody else, to try to keep abreast of what's going on, and try, for the same purpose, try to make our mobility clear. One of the things on the, that we're working on in that committee is roundabouts. And y'all saw a little bit of this, this is, there's two places where we kinda identified that might be good for our community, was Horseshoe Bay West Boulevard and Horseshoe Bay Boulevard. And the reason we started looking at this is that we have some very competent people. Mark Bochock's standing there, stand up for second Mark. Mark is a retired engineer, and one of the things he had worked on is roundabouts. So we started asking about roundabouts, you know, what is, what is the deal with roundabouts? One of the best things about roundabouts is it reduces crashes and injuries by like 80%. It's all your crashes, instead of being a crossway with a light there or side. And so, we started really looking hard at this, and unbeknownst to us, that TechDOT had opened up a new division that was to look at roundabouts. And so we immediately jumped on that and asked them to come down and visit with us. So we're in the process, and you see there's all kinds of notes on this as this is now. That's because we're still in the process of working with them to try to figure out how that's gonna fit in our community when it's time to put that in there. The other thing is intersection improvements. We're looking at fault line in Bay West Boulevard, a realignment. We're gonna, we're working with the resort, removing some of the rocks that are kinda in the pathway, some other intersections off that road we're looking at as well. So we're looking at these, because we know that these are problems. We've heard that from the community, so we are taking action. Just remember, it takes a while to kinda get this stuff down in a plan, and then it takes a while to kinda gather those projects up, to get costs on those, and get those started. So we are working truly to make our traffic safe in our community. Other thing that we're looking at is aging infrastructure. I said earlier that proper's 50-plus years now, west is 40-plus years now. So we're, we're getting to that point where we really have to look at our assets, because that includes everything from fire hydrants, the water mains to the ground, to the roads that we're improving, to signage, you name it. We're looking at drainage. And so these are things, as we grow as a city, that we have to pay attention to, and that's why one of the things we're doing, a comprehensive plan, is to really kinda to set out a plan for 15 to 20 years, where we can start looking at these things to make sure that we're addressing them. And then when council and new people come into the community, they have a plan to look at as well. So more of that coming, coming later, as we kinda start developing that plan. One of the things that we try really hard to do in the last couple of years, this came out of our, our Long Range Plan Committee, is to improve our communications, information that we send out, and connectivity with our community. So we started with a city corner once a week. Now we recently, Dan, Dan Herron is our communication, where you at there? Dan in the back, he's now got all of our messages that was just on Civic Plus, also going out to Facebook and Nextdoor. So we are continuing to expand our horizons on how we can impact everybody there. We are just, we are just now rolling out a, a city app. So this is an app that goes on your phone, or goes on your computers. Samantha, where you at Samantha? She's over there? Okay, she's hiding in the corner over there. Well, she's out there, and she will help you with the city app to load it on your phone. And what, basically what it does, it gives you connect into the city's website, but it also gives you the ability to work to, to, if there's a pothole, or if there's a water leak, or any type of problem, you can use their cell phone to put in a request as it goes directly into our asset management system, so it can respond to that. So, kudos to them for putting that together. It's taken about two years to kinda get it to where we think it's right, and now we're gonna roll it out. So, if you're interested in that, we'll have a booth set up over there with, with her, to where you can set up with Civic Plus, Water Smart, which is another app that if you don't know about Water Smart, please ask her about that, because everybody knows how important water is, and this gives you a, a speedometer, basically show you where you are with your water usage. A great app. The other thing is ETJ and our development within the ETJ. Even though we've had a reduction in our building permits, we still have a lot of inquiries of what's outside of our city limits within our ETJ. You know, ETJ is our, the area outside of the city one mile, that the city has the ability to have some control over what happens within that area. Recently, legislation from the legislator has tried to roll that control back from us, which is not good for us, because we control, we don't wanna see what, what works in our community, and not something that doesn't work. So, you know, one of the things, that's my next line here, is legislation. And we're working really hard. Our legislative director, Carrie, stand up, Carrie is working tremendously hard on your behalf and with the council, to make sure that they understand what the impacts of what's going on in the legislature as it, as it happens. And we're proactive this year, we actually sit TML, which is our group that we interact with on legislation that affects the city. We've been working closely with them to put out resolutions, to send them, so they can pursue those things that we ask to do with our legislators. So the last thing that I have here is the negative effect of that legislation and the Hill Country Leadership Coalition, if you wanna say anything about that?
Yes, and I encourage you to go over and pick up one of Carrie's handouts, because she's, she's listed the things that we told the legislature that we would like for them to be looking at on our behalf. And I'm very proud to say that when we shared this with this group, that I'm gonna tell you about the Hill Country Leadership Coalition, a lot of them took our document and made their own declarations that were just the same. So I think that that shows that we've done a lot of good homework. Hill Country Leadership Coalition is something that was started several years ago. It sort of disbanded during COVID, and this year we have revamped it. We had the first meeting of this group here in the spring, and we're now meeting quarterly. We're gonna meet in September up in Burnett, and we're gonna have Pete Flores come. This is a group that, it's the mayors of all of our neighboring cities, Burnett, Marble Falls, Lano, Johnson City, Doublehorn, all of the, as well as the judges, both from both Burnett and Lano County. I saw Peter Jones here, our county commissioner here. These people are taking this seriously, and we realize that we need to be a combined voice in going to the legislature. Just one little city is not gonna get their attention. But the problems that we're, that we're having with what the legislature is doing is really pervasive for all the cities. They're, they're passing laws that fit Houston and fit Austin, but they don't fit us, and they don't fit Burnett. And we need them to understand that and carve out places for our communities that fit what we're wanting to do. So I'm very, very happy to be part of that group, and we're gonna be moving forward on your behalf. This is, this is a legislative year, so we're gonna be talking to the legislators, and hopefully we'll be able to get their attention, and get some, get some things done that are gonna be beneficial for us. So I'm happy about that initiative.
Okay, just kinda one other thing I wanted to let y'all know. The last two years, we've kind of stopped doing deer trafficking. The reason was because we were not getting the counts. We have a key performance indicator, which is basically the count of deer that get hit on 2147, plus the population count. And when it drops below a certain level, we save the money, don't do it, because the population is just gonna not make it up. Well, this year, with the, the numbers are back up, the hits are starting to come back up, we've noticed a lot of deer, so we're, we're gonna go back into our herd management. But we revamped it for, for this year. So we took that time, the last two years off, to really kinda figure out what is a better way to do this, because we had herd complaints, you know, about seeing what was going on, about dropping the nets, the noise, and different things like that. So we started looking at other communities were facing the same thing. So we started looking at a pin system, and now we have two pins like this. We're gonna set this one up at, in Martin Park, kind of in the area out there, so everybody can look at it. Basically, doors are open on the one side, and then when, they can remotely drop those. And so instead of like a net which falls on the animals, the pins are down, and you have to go out there wrestle them down, they fall in this pin, and then we just back this trailer up to this part, and they can cull it and out and let them go, you know, some of the, some of the babies and stuff we let go, and, and some of the bigger one deer that, they're the bigger bucks that are, ones that are beautiful, we like to leave those. So, but, but we did manage, we're gonna go back to managing these again. Animal Patrol Officers are gonna do this now versus the contractor that we're using for did a good job, but his costs kept rising, and then we, we looked at that, and I think Chief, Chief Graham was, and the Animal Patrol Officers really came in to say that we make it come up with a different plan than we did. So this will reduce the stress on the animals, it'll also reduce the noise that goes on the neighborhoods and the site within that happening. Long-term savings, this is definitely gonna be much cheaper in the long term. And, and again, remember that we donate all this, this protein that comes from the deer to the local food bank, so it's going for a good cause. So just to let you know, that's, that's what's still going on. It'll start up in November of this year. So with that, the only other thing I wanna kinda touch on real quick is, you know, we've been doing the long-range plan for every five years. This was the time to come up with that, and Elsie and myself started looking at this, we kinda decided it's time for us to do a plan, and have our own written plan, which is most cities have. And so we taken that and kinda formulate that into a comprehensive plan. And basically, it's taken a lot of the tenants that were in the, the long-range plan, and it's gonna, we're gonna develop our first plan going forwards. And this, this looks at, you know, first thing that we do is have to look at our future land use plan, which the group is fixing to talk, is doing that. And then, the other thing is, you know, we have to get stakeholders, which I appreciate y'all being here, is we have those please the same, they'll come and visit with us and tell us what's, what you feel like on there, so we can kinda get that right. Clarify growth desires and the vision of the community, protect the values, which is a very key thing for us. And also look at places like that on 71, where we can get some more commercial out there, the right commercial, not big box stores and things like that, but the right commercial that can actually add tax, sales tax value to us, which can help us keep our airborne tax down. So we're working on that plan to do that, and then it helps us keep a reasonable tax rate by still ensuring quality of services. And then we bind that to our capital projects, and we work with our regional partners to connect all that together. So with that, I'm gonna pass it to Ruben Fischner, who is our committee chairman for the LUDAC Committee.
I'm a little nervous that it's late afternoon and it's dark in here, but I didn't bring any good jokes, I'm a little bit at risk. But thank y'all for being here. My name is, mention is Ruben Fischner. We have committee members seated here, and Mark at our table. Our table's the most important, most interesting, and you'll want, you'll wanna start and finish by coming over and seeing our table. Our job really is to ask you what you want the future of Horseshoe Bay to be. We're not here to tell you what that is, we're here to engage you in there. And so to that end, the, wrong button. The city established in March this committee of citizens, primarily to get your feedback on what you want the future to look like. I think we'd all admit, we live in a wonderful and a unique community, and we'd all love to keep it that way. If you do not respond to our survey, we failed, and we'll get fired. We won't get any more of those thank you bucks with zero dollars. So we really, really want you to encourage all your friends and neighbors to come out and take the survey. These are the committee members, the mugshots there on the right. Gil is here, Mark is here, Willie and myself. You can see also, we've had some great help, Brooks and Mike, I saw Mike earlier at another meeting, they were on the previous Long Range Planning Committee. So they've been very helpful, helping us with their council, we've been working with the mayor and Jeff and his staff. Poor Jeff gets to meet with us almost weekly. We mentioned extraterritorial jurisdictions, another one of those things like LUDAC that rolls right off your tongue. So I'm gonna call it ETJ from now on. It's actually the result of legislation that occurred in 1987, that gave, as Jeff and the mayor had mentioned, cities a great amount of power to the point, you could even involuntarily annex people back in that day. However, if you look at the, your right on this chart, it's actually been diluted over time. For the city of Horseshoe Bay, one mile within our city limits is what's called the ETJ. So all that property outside of 71 to 2183 to our west is one mile is in our ETJ. I'll show you a map of what that looks like, and that's important, because our survey is gonna reference what you think should be considered in the ETJs, and I'll describe that in just a moment. Another thing that's not reflected here is you can no longer involuntarily annex people in the ETJ. So that's been removed, and just this last year, you could actually opt out and choose not to be in the jurisdiction. So why are we doing this now? One, I just mentioned, you can see that the legislation is moving in a direction that you heard the mayor talking about, what the city's trying to take action to deal with, but it is moving in a direction that lessens our ability to influence our future as it relates to the areas around the city limits. As Jeff mentioned, they're working on a comprehensive plan, and kudos to us that we live in a city where people are willing to look 15 years down the road and understand what do we need as it relates to land use, excuse me, sign the button here. The land use, housing, transportation has been mentioned, utilities, financially, and economic development. So we are obviously asked by the city to gather your desires for the future land use, so we can provide them, that they can then understand what are the impacts to other areas in their plan, so that we have a really good view. This is a little bit of a busy map, we have a big one over there, but we wanted to share it with you, 'cause it's got some really important points. It's hard to see, there's kinda red, is a city, needs paint, and blue areas are the ETJ areas, this is 71, just to give you a little bit of point of reference. The key points we wanna call out here, as you're driving down 71, it may look like everything's green pasture and everything is just fine. These areas that are in red are areas that are either for sale, or people have discussed the potential for selling. So there's actually a potential for that land to be developed in a certain way. These tan colors are actually areas that are under development and in the process of being developed. So this is an important thing for the city to get your feedback on what's being developed and what potentially could be developed in the future. So the timing is really, really important. This is, as was mentioned, a broader view, you can see Marble Falls, can I find it? Round Mountain, mayor mentioned we have other communities. These show you where the other ETJs actually extend. And so you can see, we're obviously in a community, it's not just up to Horseshoe Bay. So as we build our comprehensive plan, we, as the mayor had mentioned, we wanna work with the community to understand their comprehensive plans and how we can work collaboratively together. What have we been doing? Mostly educating ourselves, some of which we shared with you in terms of legislation as it relates to the ETJ. We wanted to have an understanding of the current land use. And we spent quite a bit of time doing interviews, and we wanted to understand what that might look like from a number of perspectives. So the most important thing, though, that we wanna call out here at the bottom, is to ask you to take the survey, and the coming soon starts tomorrow. We've been trying to get the message out. I'm not gonna take credit for this last comment here, but I'm assuming y'all have been paying attention, because you're at the town hall. So thank you. So, thank you all for that and help your neighbors. If we can communicate better, all joking aside, please come tell us at our table how we can get the word out to you better because we really want you to take that survey. So, on the left is some areas you probably recognize within our community, to the right are areas not in our community. So, again, we're asking you to help us be proactive and to protect and prosper the environment in which we live. Otherwise, we might just be overcome by events. How do you take the survey? We're trying to make everything as accessible and easy as possible. I know you can't see it in the dark, but one of our fantastic handouts actually has a QR code on it and a link to the website for the city where you can just take a picture with your phone and go directly to the survey. Survey has 12 questions and one comment box. Some of those questions though are actually prioritizing items you would not want to see and items you would want to see in future land use. But these are all of the ways you can get to the survey. Dan was mentioned. Dan's the one that's been producing the QR code for us as well as a message. The city will send you a text message with the QR code on it. If you don't know how that works, call your kids, they can probably show you how to make that work. Or we'd be glad to show you up here and we won't tell anybody you didn't know what that was. We're going to meet with the POA presidents on the 26th and ask them to send all of their members the same information so that you can know how you can get access to the survey. As I mentioned, the survey starts tomorrow. It'll run for about three weeks. If you have any questions, please feel free to, there's a great monitor of that email. It's not me, but it's somebody in the city that does a fanless job. If you send us some information, we'll be sure to get back to you. And again, we will post all of those results on the website. If you don't know how to find that, come talk to us, we'll show you how to get to the website as well. So, did I mention we need y'all to take the survey? That's the one. Elsie, are you, Jeff? All right.
Thank you so much. What a volunteer group. I mean, every, every committee that we have, they put in loads of time, put a lot of, lot of brain power into this and your community is better for it. So, I appreciate the applause because they are exceptional to come in and spend their time in this. So, now we kind of came to this part of the meeting where we talked about the stroll afterwards. Some of y'all came in early, but y'all know we have these booths that are set up around the building here and we'd like for y'all to kind of stroll around. They have some free giveaways things to get to them fast because they make them fast. But, but the other thing is over here in the corner, I think we have a setup to, if you have not signed up for Civic Ready, or if you want to look at something on the website or just know how to get to the website, our Water Smart app. If you need to get onto that, that's the group to talk with over there. The city app, Samantha's sitting there, she's the one and she's our smart person on that. And then anything with technology assistance, if you're having problems with trying to get onto our website or anything like that, then certainly that group can help you there. The, again, Carrie over in the corner over there, or in the middle of it, it's not really in the corner, I guess. I've been talking too long, so. Carrie, Carrie could help you with the legislative stuff. She has some handouts for that as well. And then the future land use, again, right here, this group right here, please go by there and talk to them as well. So, I'd also like to say the council here, all of your councils here, again, hold your hands up if you're a council, all right? So, please visit with them. Thank you for that. I will be over here, sitting at the table over here, or here, probably here, just here. And then, then the legislative, I talked to, you know where she is, Molly Jester, her group is in the corner back here. You're resources, she's here somewhere, over there, Rachel Hart. And Julius Barton, IT Carson, Chief Police over here, Doug Fowler over there, Farben over in the corner. Communication, Dan's is right here too. So, Development Services and COVID Forces back there, so please enjoy your visit. Thank you.